Acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land. We represent that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yoc, Huaca, Carlan, and Alamoan peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Testing, testing. If anyone from the public can hear me, can you text me?
They said they did. Oh, Dr. Moses said we can hear. Okay, Dr. Moses said we can hear.
Great. Thank you so much. We're good now.
All right.
We're gonna start over again because now the public can hear us. Thank you, public, for letting us know. Um, here we go. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below at Dejean, or you can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session after our opening procedures. The public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in the staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternate between public comment at Dejean and the one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine, if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make a public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, if you are willing and able, please rise. Dr. Hurst?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Um, staff, it seems like they can hear the land acknowledgement on Zoom. So if we could play the video and then Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, if you could read it out loud for the people in the room.
We represent that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yoc, Huaca, Carlan, and Alamoan peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Great. That was from Pinot Valley High School. We all heard it. So we do not have to have Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy read it, but thank you for offering to do that. We are now moving to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today, of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Now I'm gonna read the board-approved anti-racist statement. "The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of West Contra Costa Unified School District education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of the West Contra Costa Unified School District community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools." Dr. Hurst, may we please have roll call?
Yes, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Present.
Trustee Phillips is absent, and Trustee Reckler is absent, ma'am. That concludes my roll call.
Thank you, sir. We are now moving to B six, Report and Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, ma'am. Item eight, two point one, in closed session, the board gave staff direction on the matter. The board voted to approve the appointment of Priya Sinbi as Michelle Obama Elementary School Principal. The vote was as follows: Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. With Trustee Reckler absent, Trustee Phillips absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Beth Minor as Murphy Elementary School Principal. The vote was as follows: Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Reckler absent, Trustee Phillips absent. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to B seven, WCCUSD, public comment. How to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form. Or participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Ah, I got this down now. Hi, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I am the Student Information System Supervisor for West Contra Costa Unified School District. Um, I am not here in my union role tonight. I am here in my worker bee world tonight, on vacation. So I would like to give a huge shout out to 125 awesome Girl Scouts that are attending our Alvarado Day Camp and doing a wonderful job and having a blast. But tonight, I am here to promote the educational benefits form and put it out there. I will be continuing to come back to us consistently with this form. We will also see this in a presentation later on tonight, I believe, and it will be active and live as of the 22nd, which is Monday. Isn't that fabulous? So I have it in English and Spanish. I'm going to have them up here in the front. I would love for all of you to take a few. I would love to be able to pass these out to everyone so you can see them and be able to memorize them. This is almost word for word exactly how it is on our website under the e-collect forms for parents. Parents can fill this out online. They can fill this out on a computer. They can fill this out on their phone, as well as their annual forms, which will come live on Monday also. So we are really pushing this this year and making sure that we get the word out. This is not about food. This is about educational benefits for your student in their school. Please note, it is about textbooks. It's about technology. It is about bus services, ed grants, everything you can possibly think of that would benefit a student, including support in the classroom and out on the yard. So let's keep going and get these forms filled out. Let's go for at least 90%. You know I want 100, but I'll go for 90 at this moment. Thank you, everyone.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinsner. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Maisha.
I would like to ask the board to please keep an eye out for class numbers this year and to remind everyone that the UTR contract states, "The district will make a reasonable effort in the best interest of our students to reduce the number of combination classes and/or to reduce them to less than maximum class size." But last year at my school, this did not happen. All classes were strongly encouraged to take extra students. The combo classes were also asked to take extra students instead of having their numbers reduced. The TK class could have been a standalone class, and we could have accommodated all of the students displaced in kindergarten. Had this happened, we would not be stuck with the need of a TKK combo, a one-two combo, and a two-three combo in addition to upper grade combos this year. Not opening the classroom and all the displacements creates a snowball effect that will impact our students now and in the future. Combination classes in one through three are very difficult for students to navigate. These students do not have the same maturity or classroom experience as their older peers. Combo students and teachers are only given half of the time of their core subjects to teach because now they have to do two different lessons in the same time slot. To complicate this even more, we give all of the new teachers, our Teach Start or TFA teachers who've never had a classroom before, these positions. They're going to school to earn their credential. They're going to studying. They're doing homework. They're trying to learn two different curriculums and then plan twice as many lessons that have to be condensed. This is ridiculously high demand ask for our experienced teachers, but we place this burden on new teachers and those in training to be a teacher. We need to do better. We need not to scare away teachers from the profession. We need the experienced teachers to step up and take the combo classes. Do not treat this like, oh, Tag, you're it, you're new, so you get the combo class. A combo is a huge ask for anyone, but especially for someone at the bottom of the pay-stick scale. Our students at WCCUSD and our staff deserve better, and we need to do better than what's happening with these combo classes. We all need to step up for the best interest of our students and their education.
Our next public comment is Cynthia Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Hernandez. Um, I'm here to talk about the Local Control Accountability Plan. It's deeply concerning that our parent advisory committees were not adequately involved in the LCAP process as required by state regulation. The LCAP process has been inconsistent and unclear, making it difficult for parents and community members to participate. Our community needs transparency and accountability in how the district addresses racial inequities and academic performance gaps. The LCAP, the LCAP mess includes special, specific actions to support student groups identified as needing the most help, particularly those flagged in the California dashboard. The current board has failed to be effective advocates for our parents and students. Their lack of transparency and failure to engage with the community in the LCAP process is unacceptable. I urge the district to address these concerns and ensure the LCAP process is transparent, inclusive, and accountable. Together, we can make sure that every student needs are met as that we are making progress in closing the racial and academic performance gap. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to working together to improve our schools and support our students in West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris-Gash. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, hey. Happy Wednesday. Happy summertime. Hopefully, everybody is taking care of their self-care, which is very, very important. So, um, one thing tonight, I hope that we do get like an update on the budget and all things budget to give us an idea of what's going on with that. Um, I wanted to share that I was a substitute for summer school at Richmond High School, and I really enjoyed the few days that I was there. Um, so this is just an observation that, um, on the, in the, the, uh, the pages that talk about resignations and retirements, like that page was two and a half pages long. And then the new hire page was only like half a page long. So it kind of talks about the state of education today. We can't make people come here, um, but what do we do to encourage people to come and encourage people to stay? And then sadly, on that new, on that page of new hires, there was not one at Kennedy High School. And we do have at least three to five vacancies. Um, so maybe in the next month or so, you know, we'll get some people or whatnot. Um, I want to congratulate my custodian. I told Lance. I remember Lance when he was a high school student at, uh, Pinot Valley High School. But I want to congratulate Lance on becoming our custodial supervisor. He is such a good young man and a good role model. Um, I also want to thank the district for, uh, the PD days that I just saw in email that first week of August. Like, I'm looking forward to learn about my Promethean board and maximizing it, as well as, um, there's like an all-day session on English language learners. So I'm looking forward to that. So district, thank you for providing that. And then just once again, people, just remember to prioritize your self-care. We're about to go back to work. For those of us who are teachers, some of y'all been working. Um, but just remember to prioritize your self-care because what we do is not the easiest thing to do. For me, y'all know it's called hard work, H-E-A-R-T. And I have been prioritizing my self-care this, uh, summer, so please, all of you do the same. Have a wonderful blessed night.
Our next public comment is Guadalupe Iniana.
Ms. Iniana?
Guadalupe, they called your name, friend. You what?
Okay, could you, yeah, there you go. Well, hello, board members. Um, thank you. I am here actually as a parent, and I am speaking on the LCAP. Uh, I know it's been difficult and it's been hard not getting the LCAP approved. We need a budget approved. But I also want to push that we need more conversations. You know, we need more interactions. I, as a DL cap member, I haven't had any interaction with staff in regards to the DL cap, to the LCAP. So that how do we get this process moving with the input that we need to be able to then pass a budget? You know, this is something that has to be done. Um, I'm hoping that within the next week or so, we hear back, like, we're, we're ready to work with you guys. We want to have data. I think, you know, we can't pass a, uh, LCAP. If, as a parent, we don't have the data. You know, we don't have enough information to be able to approve it. So I'm hoping, like I said, to hear back from staff. Um, and let's get to work on this because till now, we've just been sitting ducks. So thank you, everyone. Like I said, hopefully, we'll hear from you soon because this is a budget that has to be approved. And as a DL cap members, we need to be able to participate and to be able to work with you guys and work with staff to make sure that our schools are running the way they're supposed to. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Karina Soriano Ponce. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I am today very disheartened with the district. I work in the College and Career Department. Um, I am speaking, um, on behalf of my department and my fellow colleagues that we need communication, we need transparency. We don't have a director. We've been waiting. You have postponed it twice from voting on someone to be our director. And Superintendent, you have voiced how important College and Career Department is for our students, for our pathways, for our academies, for our graduation rates. But if we don't have a director, it's very, very difficult to steer the boat. We are each taking turns steering that boat. But guess what? I'm a UTR member, and I'm over here doing some of the director work. My other colleagues are not directors, and they're doing some of the director work. We have a lot of reports that have to be submitted. We have all worked on them without a director. We need one. We have millions of dollars that we're working with, but we need a director. And I'm voicing this, and you guys are probably upset that I'm saying this in public forum, but guess what? It's public education. This is an educational system where everyone should know what's going on. Therefore, we urge you, Dr. Hurst, come and speak to our department tomorrow, please. We need communication. We need transparency. If you're rebuilding and doing what you think is best, let us know because right now, we're without anyone. And that's unfair to other people who are depending on us moving forward and hiring people and doing what we need for our students. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pedro Ruiz. Please unmute yourself.
Uh, hello, my name is Pedro Ruiz. I'm a former student, class of 2024. And I just want to sort of bring up a concerning situation that recently came to my attention when my younger sibling, a student entering a poor elementary school, approached me and informed me about staff, the staff turnover and student transfer issues within our district. And he expressed great concern about how these changes like might impact his education and that of his fellow students. And it is, this is concerning that a nine-year-old student should feel compelled to worry about such matters, which arguably, um, staff from ongoing issues that our district has yet to address. Many parents and students like myself have demanded for more attention and more progressive action upon prevailing issues like these and issues like, uh, chronic student absenteeism and attendance. which the student recruitment and retention staff have not properly addressed. And furthermore, after closely reviewing the county's fiscal health risk analysis and summary, I've noticed the same issues that many parents have brought up in recent meetings until financial oversight powers over these, um, LCAP proposal and budget documents referred to the county. And the analysis and summary outlined issues, uh, for example, the lack of efforts toward reducing or eliminating deficit spending, the failure to review or update financial systems access and authorization controls upon employment actions at least annually, the failure to ensure that one-time revenues do not pay for ongoing expenditures, the lack of transparency on how district strategies are helping students in their fiscal documents. And lastly, the most, probably the most important one, their lack of proficiency in budget management and governance for which they have failed to receive training on. And is, my question is, is it the district's lack of practical financial skills that exacerbates these potential fiscal crises? Or is it the simple disregard for our community's needs? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm calling regarding the election of board members in the future in November. Several years ago, the board made a policy of having, um, forums that the district organized and set up prior to the election. This was all before the ward system, and I know that will change things. However, I hope that the district will follow through and go with their responsibility of having forums for the board, board election. Even if, uh, everybody doesn't get to vote for people, it should still be broadcast on Zoom for the whole district so that everybody knows what the various candidates are proposing and their backgrounds and so forth. So I hope you'll look up that policy, and I look forward to having the forums on a hybrid situation so that everybody can be informed. Thank you. Have a good meeting. Goodbye.
Our next public comment is Johanna Guardian. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Johanna Guardian. I'm the resident leadership organizer at Healthy Contra Costa, and I am addressing you this evening on to talk about the LCAP and the LCAP process. Um, I really urge you all to listen to your community, to really and get truly engaged with parents, um, and to support the voices of, of, of these parents, um, who have, it's taken a lot of bravery in years of advocacy to get to this point. Um, and so I urge you all to work with them and see them as true thought partners and co-creators in this process, not only because it's the right thing to do, because, but also because it is mandated by California law. Um, and so again, board, I urge you all to please, please work with our community. Um, this is unfortunately a pattern of behavior that is not new. Um, last year, our organization, um, wrote a letter in response to some of these concerning behaviors. Um, we were attending some LCAP town calls, and all that was talked about was the strategic plan. Never was there a conversation or even a mention, um, of the LCAP and the LCAP process. And so again, um, it would be great, um, to see folks come out to the community, meet with folks, to have town calls, have real discussions, um, with community members, with parents, um, with concerned students. Um, again, I urge you all to see the community members rather than adversaries, um, but thought partners and co-creators in this process. Um, again, this should be a space where we all have the same goal in mind of doing what's best for our students. Um, and so with that, I am complete. I saved my time. Thank you.
And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Hearst, would you like to make a?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. First of all, I'd just like to, um, thank all those who gave the public comment. I wanted to just share with the, um, I think it was Ms. Burkhardt, who was talking about the forums. I wanted to assure you, ma'am, that we have been in touch with the women legal voters. We do have a point of contact. We are planning, uh, two forums, so I wanted to just assure you that we are on top of that and we are moving forward. But thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. And then for those who spoke about the LCAP, um, document, uh, wanted to share with you that my team, um, including but not limited to Dr. Moses, um, Catherine Acosta Vaproskus, and Summer Sigler, um, and others in the business department and teaching and learning department have, have been working, uh, throughout, uh, since June the 26th, working with, uh, County Office, Contra Costa County Office of Education. And we actually have, um, seven to eight meetings that are calendared so we can make sure that we are working with them and we have a compliant and a great document. And we believe it's going to be an exemplar as well. We also sent out correspondence today to the DL cap, uh, chair and several of the chairpersons as well. The plan is to send that correspondence out, uh, widely also, so you can know the work that we have been doing. We also have a timeline that includes making sure that we meet with, um, educational partners, stakeholders, but also the DL cap, um, team, executive team, and we present that document to them. And then the timeline will take us to the hearing process and then back to the board. Uh, and this timeline goes through, uh, August the 28th. So right now, we have a hearing tentatively in our mind about August 15th, and then the actual approval of the LCAP the 28th. But I want to assure all of you who are talking about the LCAP that we have been working diligently to address everything within the LCAP and bringing it back to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to our standing reports, B8. Staff, do we have members of our A, or asset, A-A-S-A-T?
No, I do not see them in the public.
Okay, and I believe Ms. Persley from ASTU, which is our adult school, said that she would come next time. I believe I saw that in an email.
Correct.
Okay. We are now going to move to B9, Agenda Review and Adoption, without objection. Is the agenda approved? Seeing no objections. Agenda is approved. Thank you, board. We're now moving to B10, Approval of Minutes, June 12th, 2024. Go ahead, sir.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from June 12th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's go to the vote. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy? Nope. It's trustee Christian. Your vote, sir? Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. The minute's passed. We're now moving to consent items. Anyone want to pull from consent? Seeing none? The consent items are now approved. We are now moving to the superintendent communication. We are now on D. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Can we bring up that report, please? Just to let everyone know, uh, we have two memoriams. Want to read both of them, and then we will take a moment of silence. Let's go to the next slide, please. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who've passed away. I regret to inform you that Abu Bakar Banco, former WCC USD Special Education teacher, recently passed away. Mr. Brown Cole worked for the district since 2006 as a high school teacher at Richmond High School. Our thoughts and our prayers go to the family and friends during this challenging time. Let me go to the next slide. The district would like to take time, excuse me, to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who passed away. I regret to inform you that Eddie Johnson passed away last month. He retired in 2022 as a special education parent professional. Eddie Johnson started working for the district in 2006 at the transition site until he retired. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife, Wilma Johnson, a retired district employee, and their daughters, Ursula, Edwina, and Erica Johnson, all current district teachers. The service information is included in the link provided. Now, I ask that everyone please join me in a moment of silence for these two that have passed away, please. Thank you very much. Next slide. What a great honor to recognize this individual. He looked up. Uh, Mr. Booker. Uh, we have a lot to say about this young man. Um, I actually have a four-page resume on him. We're not going to read everything, but I'll share this with you. It has been my privilege and honor to serve, uh, with this, uh, great human being. Um, when I came here, I'm just, uh, talking with him on a personal note. Um, everyone knows my background, um, as a Marine. Um, though he wasn't in the Marine Corps, we connected like bands of brothers, and I do, um, treat him like that as well. I do want to share with you, um, a little bit about him. It's extremely impressive. He comes with, um, a great deal of skill, knowledge, and expertise. Um, he was a police officer, as we know, uh, for Richmond PD from 1989 to 2003. He was also a police sergeant, um, with Richmond PD from 2003 to 2006. He was also a police lieutenant, watch commander, the Richmond PD from 2006 to 2009. And then also, he was a police lieutenant commander with the Richmond PD, and that was from 2009 to 2017. And in speaking about his level of expertise, um, some of the things that he does, uh, for the district is certainly not listed here, but I'll share a few things. Um, he helps supports us with compliance in state and federal regulations. Mr. Booker coordinates district efforts with, uh, public sa- safety agencies like FEMA and OES, which is the Office of Emergency Service. He coordinates, uh, district efforts with community-based organizations as well. He develops district-level emergency operation plans. He also helps develop and guide the use of site-level safety plan templates. Also, he helps supports us with the emergency response team and emergency management team, safety protocols district-wide. He does training throughout the district. He facilitates district-wide activation of NIMs, which is the National Incident Management System, and ICS, which is Incident Command System as well. He also supports us with safety training, exercise protocols for district personnel, and emergency operation plans district-wide. And that's just to name a few. Again, I've been very impressed with, um, Mr. Booker. He is certainly a, a man of character, a man of integrity. He carries himself like a Marine, and I say that proudly. And I'm proud to, um, serve with him. And I believe we are becoming the standard, um, in the area around safety, and that is because Mr. Booker, he's constantly pushing the conversation around safety and holding us accountable, holding everyone accountable for safety. So with that, Mr. Booker, we want to just take the opportunity to recognize you this evening and say thank you for all you do, sir. And I'll say this, um, my executive assistant, Ms. Rosa Cornejo, she tried to get me to give you some purple flowers. We're not going to do that, sir, but we do have a gift for you, so if you could come forward, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to take a picture as well.
Uh, come on, Mike. Come on, translation. We taking a picture?
Yes, yeah, I bet you it'll be very good. Okay, I'd be happy to. No, I can't see everybody yet, but I... Hold on a second. Let me just try something. No, that's going to be too big. Okay, so I need to have, you guys need to be in a little bit. You can. There you go. Yeah, okay, good. Nicely, nicely done. That looks really good. Okay, one, two, three. One, two. Okay, so now the other phone. They can't announce it, so that's good. Okay, one, two, three. One, two. Okay. This is yours? You're welcome. You know you're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, ma'am. And again, uh, thank you so much for all you do, Mr. Booker. Good to go. We want to share some upcoming events with you as well. We don't want you to miss out on our summer school graduation. That's on the next slide. Um, please, if you're listening, come and cheer on our graduates. Um, they've been working hard. They're really proud, and we want to celebrate them. That's going to be Thursday, July the 18th. It's going to be at Richmond High School. It's going to be at their Little Theater at 6:00 PM. We'll see you there. Uh, the next, we wanted to just share with you about our National Night Out, 2004, August the 6th. Uh, interesting, everyone's is August the 6th except for Pinot. Pinot's is different. Um, if you look on their website, I think this is in October, but we wanted to encourage you to go to the National Night Out. Um, I've been, uh, there since I've been here in the community as well. And it's an opportunity to celebrate, uh, community, make connections as well, and to also develop stronger partnerships and relationships with our first responders as well, our police department. So you can see, uh, we have Point Richmond, um, starting at the Triangle Park Place at West Richmond Avenue, and then also you see Hercules Night Out as well, 6:00 PM at Refugial Valley Park. And then also, you see Hercules Night Out as well, six P M. At Refugio Valley Park, six to eight P M. And then also Central Richmond, the city of Richmond, they're having theirs also. I think there's uh they're encouraging um a start time at five uh five P M. So we wanted to encourage the community and everyone listening to uh attend the National Night Out in one of our communities. Next slide. Uh, this is really exciting as well. We just wanted to highlight what um our food service employees are doing um for all of our students ages eighteen and under and our special needs students as well, providing nutritious meals uh free. Um, and then you can see also there's over forty meal sites. You can click on that link at the bottom, and it'll take you to those sites where you can go and pick up your meal. I did have a conversation with Ms. Jellison today. She did say that parents could pick up the meal. However, you have to have a student, the student with you. And if there is a medical issue while the student cannot come, then there needs to be something on file to indicate that. So we wanted to just share that bit of good news that we're doing in our district, and thank you, Ms. Jellison and your entire team. And then we wanted to share uh some, some tips to start the school off. This ru- this slide here is more for our parents. And so some of the things that we want to encourage you to do is making sure you download the the Power School app either onto your desktop or download the app as well and familiarize yourself with Power School. Create a password and a username as well, and there's directions on how to do that. We also want to encourage our parents to complete uh the annual forms. We want to encourage our parents before the school starts as well to download the Parents' Square app on either your desktop or download the app also, and then to turn on the Parents' Square notifications. And then what we'll do, we don't have this slide, ma'am, but we also wanted to just share, that was more for for parents, but for our students, we're going to load the slide. So with the public, you can go back up and see the slide for students and what you can be doing as well. So some of the things we want to encourage our students to do is right now to start establishing routines and good habits uh in the summer. So that goes from studying habits. So parents, we're encouraging you to work with your students, your child, on studying habits, reading. We have been encouraging, based on research, that our students are reading at least minimally twenty minutes per day. Um, our college board has a summer reading list. We will have that available for you so you can make sure that you're reading on a daily basis. And then some of the pieces that we were looking at also in preparing for the new school year is parents, sit down with your your children and start allowing them to start developing goals. And those goals that they're setting, target them in their academic areas, in their classes, and what goals they want to set for themselves. We also want to encourage uh good sleeping habits as well for our students, good homework habits also. And parents, um, we want to encourage you also to look at the time that our students are spending with technology, whether it's T V or social media, and monitoring those pieces as well. There's other pieces that we want to encourage also, and again, we'll put this all on a slide for you. Start preparing for your supplies, your school supplies. Um, some of you know what you want to get for your students. Some some of the students know what they want to get for themselves. And some schools already have listed their um school lists, supply lists, so you could start going onto your websites for your schools and looking at what those supplies are that's going to be needed for your students. And um you can contact also teachers, your future teachers also, and ask about the supplies that you'll need. And then there's summer bridge activities as well. There's a number of resources on their website, and they're free resources as well. You would be amazed in how many free resources there are that just have packets of information that's aligned to our standards, and you could download those free. And uh what we want you to do and encourage you is to download some of those summer bridge activities and allow your child, your student, to have about fifteen minutes of dedicated time per day just to work on those summer bridge activities. So those are some of the things for our parents and some of the things for our students that we want to make sure that you're doing to prepare yourself for the new school year. Next slide. And we're going to turn this over to our associate superintendent of teaching and learning to talk about our exciting elementary school and secondary school summer program.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Good evening, President Smith Folds, board members and members of the community. It is summer, but we have a significant number of students who are engaged in dynamic learning through our summer programs. For our elementary school sites, we have three general education schools that are co-located with our special education sites at Riverside, Coronado, and Downer, serving seven hundred students and keeping class sizes relatively small at about twenty students per class. Students are engaged in actively closing their gaps and learning standards-based instruction with an emphasis on science and really uh making sure that summer loss is minimized. We also have two elementary special education sites serving our E S N students. That's really uniquely designed to be able to support their individual specialized needs. And we're really excited to also be able to pair that with nine different sites through C B O partners that allow our students to have a full day of programming and really allow them access to have school enrichment um through almost five o'clock at some sites. We can go to the next slide. For our secondary programs, we're really excited to be able to offer a Genuity Credit Recovery online at three different school sites. We have one in-person hub at Richmond High School that's serving about five hundred students, about two hundred of them getting a Genuity Credits. And then we have two additional hub sites at Dejawn and Deansa, and this is co-located with our special education students, serving about four hundred and seventy-four students in credit recovery. And in addition to that, we do have expanded learning programs through our C B O partners for credit recovery and career exploration in college and career readiness at with our different C B O partners. I had the opportunity to check in with Principal Hillier from our Richmond in-person hub. And while it's the first time that we've had a single location where students from all over the district are coming together, we're really excited to report that we've had a really safe campus that's really focused on credit recovery. And we're very excited to be able to celebrate our graduates tomorrow and look forward to bringing some student achievement data about our summer results later on as we close out the program.
Thank you so much. And I want to talk about our vacancies. Um, this uh slide is a few days old, so there are some updates. So these numbers are a little lower, but we wanted to share with you that um as of three days ago, we had seventy-six vacancies uh in at the elementary level. Um, in talking with um human resources, you can see these schools here, Bayview, Coronado, Harding, Stige, Verde, West County Mandarin, they have the most vacancies. Um, three vacancies, as a matter of fact. In talking with them, there's no more than four vacancies at these sites. But we still have some time to um get this number down as well. Secondary teachers, uh twenty-three vacancies. And again, if you look at these sites, uh Cormatsu Middle School, you have Pinot Valley High School, Kennedy and Richmond High School as well, three or more vacancies, but specifically, um, we have Richmond that has three. We have Cormatsu that has four. I know that there was someone that came on and said that we had between three and five vacancies at Kennedy. However, there's only two vacancies at Kennedy, but with some point fours as well, so it's not um up to five. Uh, the one that has the the most is Pinot Valley, five, but we do believe that we'll be able to get that down as well. For special education, we have thirteen vacancies. For classified employees, it's two hundred and forty-seven, and most of those, as we know, are paraprofessionals as well. And going to the next slide. Know that um the human resources team is working hard in addressing all of our vacancies. Uh, what I didn't mention is um administrators, especially principals. There's three vacancies right now uh for principals. Um, one, we do have a plan for. We'll bring that back to the board on uh the first board meeting in August, and then one is posted, and then one will be posted. So there are um plans for those administrative positions. There have been thirty-seven job fairs throughout the year. Um, we do rely on our partnerships as well. You can see here the partnerships that we have had, and I know that um Dr. Johnson had talked about these before. We have thirty five thirty-five university contracts. We do have um worked closely with T F A, Teach for America, our international teacher partnerships, teacher residency programs, and then we rely heavily also on our retired teachers as well. Um, marketing and rebranding advertisement, uh, we're working with Rochelle, our director of communications, and we're highlighting total compensation. That includes our salaries, our bonuses, our health benefits, and our stipends. And then you can see also uh what we utilize as far as job boards. We utilize EdJoin, LinkedIn, Indeed, EdWeek, Ed Cow, social media, paid advertising. And I wanted to just ask um Dr. Johnson, do you have anything to add to what we're doing to address the vacancies?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hurst. Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Board President and members. We, in addition to um our recruitment efforts, we do have three additional job fairs that are coming up. On June twenty-second, we have district interviews because we do have teachers who are in a general pool who have not applied for a specific school site. We bring them in, we hire them, and then we assign them to schools, our most high-need schools first. We just did this about two weeks ago, was and we hired ten teachers. On seven twenty-five, July twenty-fifth, we have another virtual jo- this will be a virtual job fair, not in person. That's in um collaboration with Tulare County Office of Ed. And July twenty-ninth, we have an Indeed online job fair. We have noticed this year, I will reiterate over and over again, that EdJoin is the number one resource for um teacher recruitment. However, this year, we have seen an uptake in recruitment from Indeed. So we are joining their job fair that's specifically for teachers. And we see received another resource um this week that will help us with our recruitment efforts. At this point, we are also working with our universities, and they are sending us teachers who are intern-ready, who still have not found positions. Um, those are the things that we currently have in place. All of these job fairs we have attended, we have saved their information, and we have reached out to all of those, all of those applicants to see if they are interested in coming to our school. What is helping our district, what is really helping us this year is having the additional bonus that we can provide them. And this time, instead of focusing solely on salary, it's focusing on the total package. One thing I am proud of with West Contra Costa Unified, one of many, is that we have benefits that are um better than other districts. And that has been a selling point in our recruitment efforts.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Ma'am, that concludes our report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Board, do you have any questions? Clark Gonzalez-Loy, go ahead.
Thank you, President. Just have one question. Uh, Dr. Hurst and Dr. Johnson, thank you for the presentation. For, I I know we're actively recruiting, uh, but in case there are openings, do we all, are we already creating a plan to figure out what to do in those openings so we don't have just open classrooms at the beginning of the year?
Yes, our plan, if we are not able to hire all of those people, is that we still have our substitutes in place, and we have various types of subs. We have day-to-day, we have thirty-day, and then we have sixty-day. So they can come in and and temporarily be in those classrooms while we're still searching. What I have not mentioned is that we still have our contract with um Teach Start, and that is an option, but our first option is to find credential teachers.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, sir, I think one of the things we do um every year and part of our summer work, we get together as an executive cabinet. We'll be doing that this year, too. Once everything is said and done, and we've exhausted everything, at the end of the day, we have to look at our resources at the um district office and deploy those resources. So we work closely with uh Sherry Riverbank, Riverbank. And uh we put together a diagram, and we deploy people the first day, the first week, and so on and so forth. I wanted to share that as well.
And if I can add, that we are having staffing meetings weekly. Staffing meetings consists consists of a team of people from H R, Kim Chamberlain, who's usually here, is on that committee, as well as E Ds, and then principals are invited to come in if they need to. And what we do is we look at enrollment every week, and we see if we need to keep classes open because what you will find over the summer is enrollment fluctuates. But as the school year comes close, as we get closer to the school year, we have collapsed classes. Perhaps there are three children in a classroom. That's not enough to keep open and keep a full-time F T E. So we make the necessary adjustments, which usually frees up additional teachers to be placed in other locations.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any other questions? Dr. Johnson, could you repeat the dates of the job fairs, please?
The job fairs are different from the district interviews. That is invitation-only. That's July twenty-second. The virtual job fair is July twenty-fifth, and the Indeed online job fair, July twenty-ninth. And we are adding um weekly, but these are the three that we have coming up.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, or any other cabinet members or anyone in the audience, if you have not, I don't know how to frame this as a question, but if you have not visited Stige during their summer program, I encourage you to go. They have an amazing summer school program um by uh Dr. or uh Principal Davis from Aloney is doing Stige Summer School as their administrator. She's dynamic, but the program itself is also dynamic. So thank you, district, for um creating that summer school program at Stige. They have a really amazing health building that they're doing over at Stige, and I can't think of the name of it, but when I visited, it was wonderful. So I encourage all of you in the next two days, if you can, get out to Stige. It was amazing. I also want to do a shout-out to Riverside. I visit, I uh visited Riverside, also an amazing summer school program that they have out there. Don't know how to frame that as a question, but it is what it is. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving on to action items. We are starting with E one, consideration of approval of third amendment. Nope, we're not doing that one, are we? That one needs to be pulled.
President, the online agenda is different than the paper one because we removed E one from the paper, so E one is now E two. So if you see, you can say E E one is the single plans for student achievement.
So we are now on E one, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Single Plans for Student Achievement. Okay. Um, if you have a paper agenda, E one was pulled off of the website agenda. That's took uh clerk, what clerk Gonzalez-Loy just uh informed us. All right, so let's go to E two. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Single, Single Plans for Student Achievement is E two on the paper, is E one on um the website. Okay. Uh, Ms. Sigler, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, board. Um, this is my first presentation to you in this role, so thank you, first of all, for the confidence you've placed in me. Um, this item, it will require a board vote separately for this item, and what you're being asked to approve is three-point-eight million dollars in local control funding and four-point-five million dollars in Title One funding. These funds are allocated in accordance with what's known as the Single Plan for Student Achievement. These S P S A documents contain the school's vision and initiatives to improve student achievement. Uh, tonight, we're bringing twenty-four S P S As forward uh for both districts Title One and non-Title One schools. They are aligned with the district's local control accountability plan and the strategic They are aligned with the district's local control accountability plan and the strategic goals. With our federal Title One spending plans. The plans include annual measurable outcomes based on the local metrics for each goal. So basically district-wide goal, and then under it, a school-based goal to drive towards that goal. The SPSAs are developed and approved by the school staff and the school site councils. In consultation with ELAX and APACs. The public will be able to access and view these plans on the district website. And upon completion in May, the district staff does review the plans to make sure that they're appropriate and compliant. So the plans that we are bringing forward tonight, we have reviewed and we confirm that they meet the requirements. So we are recommending and requesting that you approve the twenty four SPSAs. That we have attached to tonight's agenda, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one. Kate Burkhardt, please unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm still having trouble with my lowering my hand. I'll be more careful. I have no comment.
There's no more public comment.
Thank you so much. Board, are there any questions? We're gonna do three questions and two minute public or two minute comments. Mr. Phillips, go ahead. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. How are the SBAs in alignment with the LCAP? If the LCAP is not actually completed?
So the broad goals in the LCAP are in alignment with the goals in the SPSA because they're based on the goals in the strategic plan. We are working hard to incorporate community feedback into the LCAP and to bring clarity to the LCAP document. But that clarity isn't changing the spirit of the goals. It's changing the clarity of the language and the clarity of the data reporting.
Can you talk a bit about? The creation of these plans and specifically. Or include how feedback from the local school community has gone into this?
Yeah, and I would invite Catherine to jump in if I miss anything. So we start the SPSA early spring, late winter. And it really begins, it should be an iterative process that really never ends, right? But when we finalize the template, we bring it to the school sites and you really review data. So we bring it to the principals. They should be meeting with site councils and their PACs all the way through and looking at data. That feedback informs the plan. Principals work in consultation with district staff and each other to draft, and that should be really incorporating the feedback. They had, this year, they got the template, and when they were able to draft, you bring it back to the school site community for feedback. They submitted a draft, district staff also gave feedback largely around goal clarity, data reporting. And that should end in final approval from a school site council.
And you confirm that for each of these plans, that the principal. Shared these plans with their councils and with their PACs. And got feedback, and that that feedback loop was incorporated, that there was a feedback loop. And it was incorporated.
Yeah, thank you for the question. For each of the plans we're bringing forward, we've reviewed minutes from their meetings. To ensure that we have documentation of both data review, feedback, and the signatures confirming the plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Dr. Moses, you would like to say something? Dr. Moses is on Zoom.
Yes, good evening, Board President, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy and Trustee Phillips, Trustee Christian. I just wanted to further clarify so that we're all on the same page with how the LCAP aligns with the SPSA. While the SPSA is a federal requirement for the expenditures of the federal title funds. Parents do have to approve the expenditures for the federal funds under the guidance of the SPSA. Our district has selected to also have sites to implement or to name the strategies that they're using. With LCAP funding as our accountability measure. So there isn't an approval process per se for LCAP spending in the sites. There is one goal in the LCAP called site allocations to SPSA. Where our district has, we plan to give sites three point eight million dollars. And the three point eight million dollars that are distributed among the sites equitably. In terms of the formulas set in place by LCAP. They have to name how they use that money, but the LCAP document itself does not reference any of these SPSA strategies. We trust that our school site leaders and families and staff are creating the strategies that are gonna support student achievement. And so this is not a line item on the LCAP, as it is an overall item to support all schools. I just wanted to clarify how it relates and why we're able to move forward with this, because it's not a requirement legally. It's what the district has selected to, how the district has selected to monitor site. Allocations from the LCAP under that one goal. I hope that helps.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moses. Board, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, may I get a motion?
Or President, I will move that we approve the twenty four SPSAs for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Board, do we have any comments? Thank you, sir. Wait for the clock, please, if we could get two minutes on the clock. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I think in our last meeting. There was a lot of, I'll just say confusion. And I think the confusion arose out of. Folks not really knowing. What would happen if the board did not approve the LCAP? But making statements about what would happen. And so a lot of misinformation is floating around. In the community, a lot of misinformation has been floating around in the press. And I know that one of the things that happened at the last meeting. Is we were told that we couldn't vote on SPSAs. Which apparently is not true. And so just like comments went out saying that the board. Or certain trustees, stop this and stop that. Assuming that the SBAs, SPSAs are going to pass this evening. I would hope that a statement would go out clarifying the things that were said about the board. After the last board meeting, so the public is clear. Because. I'll just say there's a lot of misinformation that was going around. And the truth is that misinformation largely was generated in this room. And so, just so everybody is clear and everyone is on the same page, I hope that staff puts out an email, just like it did last time. Thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think that I was not here at that meeting, but I think that being part of conversations. With the president and Dr. Hurst and Dr. Moses and the county. We were getting daily information post the decision by the board. Almost contradictory information on a daily basis. So I think that what we were hearing, or what you all were hearing at the board meeting, was what was understood. At that time. And I think that even in the next two weeks after that, or since then, there's been quite a bit of information that. We've been told by different parties, because this never happened before in the state of California. So I think that we are finally in a place of clarity. Which is why I appreciated Dr. Hurst's communication. Last week, kind of expressing the most current information. I'd agree, I think that we gotta keep. The community informed in a form of communication as new information comes through. And as new parties get involved, since FICMA and the state has gotten involved just in the last week and a half. So I think that keeping community informed, it's a good idea. But I think that also, I don't wanna. I don't think that anybody here should be shamed for the information that was given the night of the board meeting or the two weeks after. Because legal counsel gave us information directly one day. And the next day, they took it back, or FICMA, or the county. So I think everybody's learning as we go on a percentage, you know, decisions never happened before. So I don't necessarily think anyone needs to be shamed for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a comment. I think that misinformation is a strong word. I think that it is a. I think it's a trigger word, and I think it's a dog whistle. The last board meeting, this board, the majority of this board did something that was never done before. Because it was never done before, there was no rules, there was no guideline, there was nothing except. A very strong CBO telling us what she knew at the time, and then was very, very, very. Up to the minute, making sure that we were doing the right thing. She kept us into compliance, because if we would have voted on something that we didn't know we could vote on, then we would be in more trouble. I think that it is imperative that the board understands the consequences of their decisions. And if they make a decision to wear something that has never happened before, then they have to have the grace, the understanding. And the flexibility to know that with that, things are going to change day by day, minute by minute, second by second. I was standing as close to CBO Moses as possible through the last, from July twenty sixth until today. As close as possible, watching her navigate something that has never been done before. She did an outstanding job, leading this district, leading her department, leading the board. Through all of the things that was uncharted territory. I don't believe she gave one speck of misinformation. I believe that she told us everything that was happening because somebody was telling her. Because it hasn't been done before, they were trying to navigate to the best of their ability, from the county to FICMA to everyone else. This is not, it's, it's never been done before. I don't know how to say it any other way. We are setting precedent, for better or worse, now someone has a playbook because of the decisions that the majority of this board made back on July twenty sixth. I am complete. Okay, so let's move on to the vote. We are voting. The motion is to accept the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Single Plan for Student Achievements. Or SPSAs. We are gonna go to Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
President Smith votes, if it's okay, I would just like thirty seconds to say something.
You gotta wait to the end of the night, because we are moving and shaking tonight. Tonight, I have to go home because I have things to do. God bless us. We're moving on. You gonna wait to the end of the night, sir? Let's go on, go with it. What's that vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Christian, your vote? Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Let's move on to E three, Williams Lawsuit Complaints Quarterly Report. Mr. Freeze, this is your item, sir.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're asking the board to accept the William Quarterly Report for the period of April first, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty four. There were zero complaints for textbooks and instructional materials. There was one complaint for teacher vacancies and misassignment, and that was resolved. Zero facility conditions. That totals for one complaint. We asked the board to accept this report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Freeze, could you tell me those dates again? That's my question.
Yes, those days were April first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth. It was the last quarter.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I move that we accept the Williams lawsuit complaint quarterly report.
I'll second that. Board, do we have any comments? I have a comment. If we could put the clock up. Mr. Freeze, I usually abstain from these, just because I. Wanna see the matchup, but I have noticed that there is a matchup between what I'm seeing on campuses and what the report is that you just gave. For example, when you say this has been resolved. I see that that has been resolved. So tonight, I'm gonna vote yes on the quarterly report. And I just wanted to say that out loud. I'm complete. Board, we're gonna go to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now moving to E four, Award of Contracts for the Alenda Elementary School Playground Improvement Project. Mr. Freeze, I believe this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we're asking the board to award the contract for the Alenda Elementary School Playground Improvements. Bids came in after the posting of the documents, so the bid would be the district. Conducted a public bid process with the project bids. The project bids are open on July eighth, twenty twenty four. The following contractors submitted a bid, NG Builders. In the sum of three hundred and fifty three thousand, eight hundred and eighty three and fifty six cents. Calico, California Constructors, Inc., their bid was four hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. And G and G Builders, Inc., four hundred and twenty three thousand, three hundred and twenty nine dollars. The following contractor is the lowest responsive bidder is NG Builders. We asked the board to award this contract tonight to NG Builders for three hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty three thousand, eight hundred and eighty three point five six dollars tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Jean Kitzner, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I would like to ask the board to please do their due diligence when they look at these playgrounds. At Verdi, we got an award, and some equipment's gonna go up on the big playground, but not on the preschool and TK playground. A double slide's been removed, a piece of plywood was put up. Halfway through the year, they painted it with some texturing stuff so the kids don't get splinters. If you look under the main structure, there are rust spots on the platform and stuff that have been painted over and not, and they're still rusting. So please make sure all these other schools, all of their playgrounds are inspected and all of their equipment. So that part of the school doesn't get new stuff, and part of the school gets stuff that may or may not be safe. And I'm hoping that someone can come out to Verdi and look at that preschool TK playground and check it out and see what can be done. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
President, I'll move that we award the contract for the Alenda Elementary's School Playground Improvement Project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay, moving on to the vote. No, I'm sorry. Trustee Phillips, wait. No, I'm sorry. Uh, trustee Phillips, wait for the clock and go ahead, sir.
Uh, doc- thank you, Dr. Hurst, um, and Mr. Freeze. I think this question is uh, for you or it's a comment really. Um, I don't, we are on comments, right? Yeah, I don't, um, I'm not able to get around, uh, to the sites, uh, like I used to because I'm in Oakland all day, every day, uh, sometimes until the evening. Um, but the caller in, you know, just talked about, you know, a project at Verdi. Um, and I know Verdi's not our only school. But to the extent that we do and we are able to do kind of quality checks on the playgrounds, that's a good thing. I know that or I believe in the past and I have no reason to believe that we're not still doing this, that after these projects are done, including the playground projects, that they are actually checked off um, as being completed and being completed properly. But what I don't know is how long that process takes. So for example, playground equipment is put in, is it checked a month later? Is it two months? Is it six months? Is it nine months? So and I'm- I'm saying this because, you know, I haven't been to Verdi in quite some time, but using that school for an example, if what the caller in is saying is accurate, you know, how long, you know, do we go before that kind of thing gets flagged, right? So, um, you know, if we can just make sure that that work, that checking and that flagging is- is being done as expeditiously as possible, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your vote, please, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir. Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving on to E-five.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. The board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with Louis Freeze to serve as the Associate Superintendent of Facilities, Maintenance and Operations and Bond. The employment agreement has been attached to the agenda item online for review. The employment agreement provides the contract terms for three years from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The Associate Superintendent of Facilities, Maintenance, Operations and Bond annual salary is two hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents with health and welfare benefits consistent with educational administrators of the district. We're asking for approval and to turn it back over to the clerk.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips, trustee Christian, do you have any questions? Go ahead, trustee Phillips.
Has Mr. Freeze been in the district long enough really to give him a contract? Should he be like interim for a while or something? No, oh, okay. That's my question, sorry.
Thank you. And just for- for clarity for the public, um, we are providing contracts to all of our associate superintendents and we approved the, um, other three, three or four, uh, the June twelfth meeting. It's just for clarity. Any other questions? Okay, any, um, does anyone have a motion?
I moved that the board approve employment agreement for associate superintendent, facilities, maintenance, operations, bonds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
So, Mr. Freeze, I was joking with you. Um, I- I hope you got that. Um, I do think that it is um, a good thing that we are recognizing um, folks who've been here for quite some time. And I also think that it's a good thing that we're moving, uh, to contracts for people. I know that does not mean that everyone in the system um, will- will have a contract, but at least at this level. Um, it- it makes sense. And I think that it adds continuity, um, and stability. And, and, you know, and if nothing else, you know, a sense of comfort, um, for people. Um, and I do think that that's a good thing. The district has had a lot of turnover in the last few years. And, um, to the extent that this will help alleviate that, um, I think that it's a good thing. So, uh, to Mr. Freeze and the other folks on the cabinet, I do want to thank you uh, for your work.
Thank you so very much. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you. Um, I'll be quick, Mr. Freeze. Um, I think you're very deserving of this contract. I wanna thank you because I have seen a lot of improvements in our facilities um, in the last couple of years. I think that facilities is one of those subjects that like, if you ask people, it's never gonna be perfect, no matter what we do, because it's just the difficulty of having new buildings and having very old buildings. Um, and also having to deal with a lot of upkeep, but very little staff. Um, so I wanted to also give you your flowers because I have seen myself an improvement, especially I think when community members and staff let us know of an issue. Um, the responsiveness, I think I've seen a- a- a lar- very large improvement in the last few years. So I wanna thank you and your department, uh, for that work. Um, and, um, a reason why I'm also in agreement, um, that you deserved, uh, a contract. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I have a comment. To Clark Gonzalez-Hoy's point, facilities as well as HR is always gonna be one of those things that people are gonna comment on. That's just a department that you guys hold, right? Facilities is one of the hardest ones because people see it daily. And we are a huge district, fifty-plus schools, and everyone is gonna go to their particular site and find something that needs to be fixed, remedied, rectified, corrected. And that all falls on your shoulders. I think that one of the things that we could look into and should look into is what uh, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy has been talking about, which is those summer internship programs with our students and having them be able to get their foot in the door and help with facilities because facilities is such a big, um, beast, right? Um, I think one of the other things we could do is we could reach out with- to our PTAs and our PTOs and give them some of those ideas of how they can help, right? We can reach out and give some of our civic organizations and how they can help with our facilities. I think that it has been huge getting our facilities reopened to where everyone's able to enjoy those facilities during, um, the time where the schools are not using them. I think that's a huge bonus because I think that increases the investment of the community and the site and the students with, uh, their particular school. As someone who did traffic every single day, I was at our school every day and I enjoyed the fact that I could be on campus. Being on campus gave a different level of appreciation. So that's because it looked so nice, right? Um, Lupine is a very well-kept school. You were very responsive, putting speed bumps in there to help the safety of the students. There's a lot that facility does, not to mention your, um, involvement with the Seven-Eleven Committee and the CBOC. So I just want to say thank you. And I think that on this journey of anti-racism with the district, that facilities is gonna be a huge part of that because it's a huge way of making sure every student feels loved, appreciated and valued when they walk into their school building. So thank you so very much. I am complete. Board, we are now moving on to, seeing no other comments, we're moving on to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your vote, please, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir? Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote, sir?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, Mr. Freeze. We are now, oh, we could pop it up. We are now moving on to E-six Education Code four, four, two, five, eight dot three Variable Term Waivers. Dr. Johnson, this is your item.
Thank you, trustee Smithfolds. Um, Variable Term Waivers, this authorizes a school district to assign credential teachers based on their adequate knowledge of subject matter.
I like it. Very short and sweet. Um, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I'll move that we approve the variable term- term waivers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Nope, to the vote. Trustee Phillips, your- your, uh, vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now moving on to E-seven Provisional Internship Permit or the PIP. Dr. Johnson, this is your item.
Yes, thank you again. This is what we call a PIP permit. This is a one-year permit allowing teachers who meet subject matter competence to complete their credential program.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Seeing none, sorry, let's space for a minute. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
President, I'll move that we approve the, um, provisional internship permits.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, let's go to the vote. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to F Discussion Items and Reports. There are no discussion items in reports. We are now moving to G Comments from the Board of Education and Future Agenda Items. Let it be known, it is eight oh nine. Um, so we are going to put two minutes on the clock and we will have our closing comments. Give everybody a minute to get themselves together. Anybody have a closing comment? Okay, we'll go from Mr. Trustee Phillips around to trustee Christian, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, and then myself. Two minutes, please. Go ahead, sir.
So I want to first, um, kind of finish up the statement that I started a little bit ago. When I made the comment that a lot of the misinformation came from people in this room. Now, when I didn't say disinformation, because disinformation is when somebody is intentionally spreading false information for nefarious reasons. And I did not say that. I said misinformation, which is just really incorrect information. Um, but people in this room, the people who were in this room that day were not just district staff. And I was not just talking about district staff. Uh, we had Ms. Cleveland on the line. I don't know who else was on the line. The people who were supposed to know, and I do think people who are giving direction to our staff, and people who I literally heard say these things, um, who don't work for the district but who are supposed to be advising the district, gave misinformation, um, in my opinion. Um, I also felt, um, to be honest, um, that there was some fear mongering happening. Um, and that the board was being, in my opinion, kind of bullied into voting the way that people wanted the board to vote. And I don't think that that is, um, appropriate. So I am thankful, I am glad that things are- are settling down. Um, but I did want to express how I felt, uh, about that evening. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, president Smithfolds, um. You know, just reflect from the- the last board meeting on, uh, July the twenty six, no, um, June twenty-sixth. And so, you know, pertaining to the, you know, the L cap and and the way I voted, um, and just looking back at the L cap, how the L cap should have transparency and everything about it. Um, and how the monies and how everything is going to be used, you know, for our disadvantaged students and knowing the outcome. You know, versus just, you know, we- we passed that cap, but we never know exactly how it's going to, uh, do what it's supposed to do. And so, uh, you know, we just gotta make sure we do a better job and- and, um, when the L cap or whatever, you know, state how it's gonna be used, how, you know, and- and and the purpose, and this is where it's going, uh, making sure that all of our students in the districts, our disadvantaged students or all those who, um, are struggling will have the resources. And so, um, and making sure that, you know, equity- equity is crossed the border. And so, uh, so that's pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, trustee Christian. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President, uh, Smithfolds. Uh, first, I wanted to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I've been dealing with something per- uh, personal in my family life and, uh, unfortunately, uh, that night I couldn't be here. Um, I wanted to ask for one thing from Human Resources and for the fall, not right now. Uh, HR is busy enough as it is. Um, I would like to for us to get a report from the last few years on trends for our schools that have the highest retention problem. Uh, and for us as a team to figure out how to be able to support those specific schools. Um, I think that maybe that could be like a really good, um, maybe support plan idea to present to the solutions team to work with labor on those specific schools. Um, so I mean, unfortunately, I saw like, for example, Baby there. And we know Kennedy has had problems for many years. Um, but I think that we need to be really focused and tackle them differently than we do other schools. Um, and I think that also comes with a partnership with labor. Um, so I would just love for us to get a report on that for the last few years. Um, also, I would like to just use my last time to talk about this WCCSD standard. There's a lot of difficult conversations happening nationally, statewide, or even in our community. And I think that, um, the way that we treat each other is very important. And I think that how are we gonna, we on the board set the standard, I think, for our district. And just the last few weeks, I've been getting a lot of emails saying you don't care about children, which is like very ridiculous for- for anyone to say to us because we are doing this practically on a volunteer level, including staff. Anyone here could go anywhere else and probably make more money. Um, and I think that we have to set the standard on how we speak to each other, how we speak to our adults and our children so that we can be examples, um, to our community, uh, that is different than I think what's happening nationally. Um, so I just wanted to offer that to all of us, um, because I know that we are very divided as a board, but I think that there's a level of respect that I think that we have to show uh, an example, um, to our schools in our community. So that's it. Thank you so much. Sorry, I went overtime for a few seconds.
That's okay. Um, my comment is that if you have not, or if you do not know about the Dejounte Closet, it is a place in this camp- on this campus where they have so many, um, supplies, materials and resources for not only their site families but other families. If you want to contribute to that, please get in touch with the office at Dejounte and they have things like pots and pans and, um, blankets and clothes and all types of things that are in that room. It's not called Dejounte Closet. I just put that name out there, but it is a resource for families at Dejounte. And if anyone is in earshot and you have things to contribute to that, please do so. Um, those include, uh, housewares. It includes, uh, clothes, like I said, it includes other things that's, uh, school supplies, things that students and families need when they are, um, when they have, uh, when they're in need of help, when they have a little downs- a downslide. Um, Dr. Hurst mentioned that school starts on August the nineteenth. We are thirty-two days away from school starting. Please be, um, sure that you are ready for the brand new year. And this is gonna be a year where we all have to dig in and participate and volunteer and help because it's gonna take all of us to get through all the things that are coming down the pipeline and all the things that we still work very hard to. Dr. Hurst, I wanna speak directly to your staff. I want to tell the cabinet members that are here and all of those who are on Zoom and those, uh, employees that work for the district for you, thank you. You don't get seen a whole lot and, but you get a lot of the, um, a lot of the- a lot of the the hard, the hard stuff comes towards you. And we know that you are here because you want to be here. We know that you are here because you have the best interest of the students in mind. We know that you are doing your one hundred percent and your best and we want to say thank you. So I want to say thank you. The board thanks you and we appreciate the work that you do. I'm gonna take one more second. So I wanna give you your flowers. So thank you, staff, for all that you do. Thank you for those that are listening. We have a long road ahead of us on this journey of anti-racism and we have to stick together because we are gonna get so much pushback. We're gonna get so much, um, so many ways that the system is gonna try to correct itself because that's what systems do. But we have to be willing to stand in discomfort to make sure that we are providing the best for all of our students. And in this district, this district, we are moving towards anti-racism because we know that that's the best thing to do for all of our students. So. All right, we are now going to I, adjournment. We are going to adjourn at eight nineteen. Uh, we will have our next board meeting at Levania Dejounte on August the seventh. Correct, Dr. Hurst? I don't see it on my little paper. Is Ms. Rosen August the seventh? Okay, August the seventh. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Enjoy the last thirty-two days of summer because we are starting the twenty-four, twenty-five school year off with a bang. We're adjourned.